This time I'd like to call the KC BPU Board Meeting of May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Thank you, Senator. We'd like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded both video and audio. During the visitors' comment section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address and will then have three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to be to address the board during the visitor comments section. In addition, there will be a public comments section after the general manager slash staff reports. During this section, the public may comment on the evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the visitors' comments section. Those attending in person should sign up at the sign in sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors and we will contact, conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in the room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only. We will then determine staff's involvement. Attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this at this meeting. If the side discussion is necessary, please take it outside the boardroom. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. My name is Tom Groneman. I'm second district member and board president. Other members of our board and staff include, all right, Bill Johnson, general manager, David Haley, member at large, position two, and board board vice president, Stevie Wakes, first district and board secretary, Brett Parker, third district, Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position one, Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, position three, and Angela Lawson, acting chief counsel. At this time, I'd ask everybody to please remember to put your phones on silent and be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin the meeting, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angela, would you please take roll, please?
Roll call. Parker?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Groneman?
Here.
Haley?
President.
Wakes?
Here.
Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda, are there any comments or additions, corrections, additions, distractions from the agenda?
Mrs. Rose, I move to approve this evening's agenda.
Wait a second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the agenda. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of May one, two thousand and twenty-four, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular session of May one, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
That motion carries.
This time I'll turn the meeting over to the general manager, Mr. Bill Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, I'll first look to you to see if there's anyone signing up to speak tonight. The only person on the list here is C.C. Mank. If you can state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hello. My name is C.C. Mank. I live in Wyandotte County. So I wanted to come and I wanted to ask the board, why, why is this board represented by the same attorneys as the Unified Government Board? And if that is, and if that's the only way you can do it, then why does this board even exist? The full commission board should be presiding over the BPU instead of having elected officials. Because if you have an unethical attorney advising you unethically, then you probably already have broken the law and violated this community's rights. I'm not sure what the process is. However, I would like to know what the process is for you guys to go to whoever you need to go to to find out how do you split the attorneys? Because you're not, if we elect two different boards, then that means that it should have a separate attorney. Everything should be separate. I understand that the Unified Government is the parent company, but at the same time, if we elect this board, then we should have a different lawyer to represent this board. And if we have a, if we elect the board at the Unified Government and at the school districts, we should have different attorneys, not the same law firm, not the same attorney, getting two different salaries from both companies, from one company, but two different entities. No, that's getting over on the people. And this is why we have problems and we're going bankrupt and why we have to elevate our rates and stuff like that to compensate for salaries that you're getting two of. This is supposed to be a unified government, but we're paying salaries to an attorney who does both boards from both places. How does that benefit us? Especially when the legal representation tells you to ignore us, tells you not to answer our questions, tell you to basically shut up and don't say anything, just let me rant and rave. No. That is not how you're supposed to conduct yourselves as representatives. And the only laws you have to follow are the laws of the land. Any contracts or oaths that you were taking for the BPU and the Unified Government that tells you contract that you don't have to listen to us is illegal. Because y'all do not have the right to trample on our right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, period. So I would like to know what is the process to split the attorneys that represent these boards? Because we need attorneys to represent just BPU, just the Unified Government.
You have thirty seconds.
Have a problem with the Unified Government, y'all should have, y'all should be able to go to a legal representative and rectify the problem, but you can't because she's working for both teams. Like, that don't work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Mank, thank you. The observation I think that you've made today is well taken. I share your concerns. But by the way, I should underscore that I believe the ethics have been held at the highest standard for the counsel that we have been provided from the UG. But I do feel that from time to time, there could be a conflict as between what the policies for the Unified Government are and the policies of the utility. We do have a large department, the UG does, and it may be an opportunity to look at if someone else from the UG's legal department, at least, which is not fully independent counsel, because they both come, would come from the same department, but that we would have separate counsel, even if it's derived from the same source. I believe your point is well taken, and there could be, or might very well be examples that arise where the business of this utility is potentially in conflict with that of the Unified Government. And certainly, there should be independent discussion with as much as possible independent counsel. Well, whatever those issues might be. Yes, ma'am. I thank you for that observation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I address Ms. Mank as well?
Yes.
Ms. Mank, it is very rare that anyone advocates for more legal counsel. And I actually, I, I, I hear what you're saying and I echo, obviously, Senator Haley's comments that I often think that the two entities should have separate counsel as well. However, I think we just heard in our work session, this is a mandate in the charter ordinance, I believe, Angie, I know you'll keep me honest on this, that the entities do either share counsel and/or the Unified Government must approve counsel. For, I don't have the wording, but, but we just discussed it, and I didn't know if you were able to listen in on the work session at all, so. But thank you for, for bringing it up.
Mr. President, may I ask? If I could ask, how many attorneys do we have at the, in the legal department now? I mean, if, if anyone knows, how many actual attorneys that we have or assistance city attorney, or assistant, I guess, UG attorneys?
Hold on one second. Right now, there are eleven and one prosecutor. So eleven, not counting the city prosecutor, we are down three, so.
With the spirit, thank you, Ms. Lawson, Mr. President. If the spirit of the law would be met, if there were someone from within the same department at the UG that represented the utilities' interests, does the, I haven't read the ordinance, does it say the same person, one entity? Or does it say someone from within the framework of the UG counsel might represent both the UG as well as the utility?
So the chief, the chief counsel is responsible for the representation and then for any assignments thereof?
Need they be the same person?
I'm sorry?
Need they be the same person?
No, I mean.
Okay, it's up to the chief counsel.
I was gonna say it's up to the chief counsel, is the question.
And currently, who is the chief counsel or acting chief counsel?
I'm acting.
Just, you did a notice.
If we wanted a separate counsel, you said, it was that we can have separate counsel if it's approved by the UG?
By the chief counsel.
By the chief counsel. How would we go about making that request to get separate counsel?
It's not separate counsel. They would still report, it would still be part of the department, so it would not be, it would not be like opposing counsel. It would still be the same. It would still be the same legal department. It would not be independent counsel.
Rob, is there anyone online wishing to speak?
Yes, sir. Dr. Hall is, has her hand raised, and I am enabling her ability to speak now. Dr. Hall, you'll need to unmute.
Dr. Hall, welcome to the board, BPU Board Meeting. If you can state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. My name is Alma Rosas Hall. I am a Kansas City, Kansas citizen. So my comments are, hopefully, I can get an answer today. If not, you know, I appreciate you guys because you emailed me back within a day or two, so thank you so much. Again, I have been reached, contacted by several community members with utility, utility issues. And I have contacted Ms. Freeman along with Ms. Rose Mulvaney. I included her in one of those emails. There are several concerns because there, and I have to get the information before I say it out loud. There is some, there's a lot of fraud going on in the immigrant community, especially the illegal community. And the fear is that if they come up and talk to you guys about what's going on, that they might get reprimanded. And so I'm here again advocating to see if we can, if they, if we can have a person of contact that though, it's about four families that they can come up and talk to one of you guys and let you know what has been going on. There is several of them that have not had any services for about two years. And so that's a bit concerning, but not only because they can't afford it, but because some, some money was taken from them. So I would appreciate if somebody can give me a point of contact, and I'm willing to come in during whatever hours, so we can help the families. Of course, they have a large amount of money that they owe. So I'm still trying to figure out what community organizations can help us assist this family so they can pay with the, the bill. And then I'm also, I'm a little bit upset because I keep finding a lot of stuff that I, it shouldn't happen in the United States, but it's happening. So I would appreciate if one of you guys can email me and let me know who I can contact. The fear is there. And I just want to make sure that if we establish the line of communication that they don't get reprimanded.
Ms. Hall, do you have anything to write with?
Uh, yes, sir.
So this is Bill Johnson. I'm gonna give you my email address.
Yes, sir.
W A Johnson, J O H N S O N at B P U dot com. If you could email me tomorrow, we'll set up a time and I'll contact you back on when you and, and every member of this family can come in and meet with us.
Okay. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Another question. So I have been trying to set up a plan so they can apply for the services. Oh, sorry.
Yep. That's okay. I paused it for the general manager, but it's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, is there anyone else?
No, sir. No other hands are raised.
Okay. All right, we're gonna close down the visitor comment section and move on in to the United Way update. Board did ask for an update, I think, last board meeting. So I did ask Todd Jordan to come back in and, and let you guys kind of know where your total assistance program is and kind of what also some of the services United Way is involved with.
So that's four minutes back. Good to go.
Thank you very much. Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Steve Hokes again. I'm Todd Jordan. I'm with United Way of Greater Kansas City. I've been working with the Board of Public Utilities and providing utility assistance. I started with United Way back when I was with United Way of Wyandotte County, and so that's coming up on a decade now. Although the, you know, pandemic put a lot of mileage on the engine, but I'm happy to be in front of you today because I think the work that we've been able to accomplish over the last couple of years, and especially with what we've been doing, both in terms of identifying community needs, which we're going to talk about a little bit, but then also the scope and scale of the utility assistance program and the overall value of what United Way and our partnership with BPU is providing has made a huge difference in the lives of Wyandotte Townians. We're going to focus primarily in a moment on the criteria and what's been happening with utility and hardship assistance. I'm talking about not only last year's results, but also the additional support that has gone into the programs and how that's being worked through. But then also the overall impact to United Way. But I did want to start, yes, sir.
For the sake of those that might be listening online, could you speak to me?
I have tall man problems, so we'll have to do the best we can. I hope you, apologies for the leaning. I want to remind folks that, you know, obviously Wyandotte County has its share of economic challenges. You know, I have in front of you not only the poverty levels that we begin to see in Wyandotte County, which, you know, you're still looking at the highest concentration of individuals living in poverty within the metropolitan area, at least what we serve with United Way of Greater Kansas City. I mean, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven people living at the federal poverty level or below is a significant amount. To give you an idea, the dollar amount for that for a single individual means they're bringing home fifteen thousand dollars a year. So that's twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven people where they're, you know, bringing in a very, very low income. I do share a level of optimism that these numbers have improved. When you look at two thousand and twelve numbers, that was about thirty-five thousand people. So over the course of a decade, when you begin to see that level of change showing up in huge census numbers like that, you know, that is improvement, but honestly, the scene, this concentration in Wyandotte County is still heartbreaking. From us, from the United Way's side, we also understand that individuals can be above the poverty threshold and still be financially struggling. One, there's a lot of discussion around living wage and other mechanisms. We and the United, with the United Way of Kansas State Association commissioned a report called ALIS, which stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained But Employed. So these are the folks who are in that gap above the poverty level, but utilizing county by county analysis has set kind of what that dollar threshold is for what you really need in order to be sustainable. And in Wyandotte County, there are about twenty-one thousand households that are above the poverty level, but are below that ALIS threshold. That means that when you include the households in poverty, there's about ten thousand of those, you got thirty-one thousand households that are below that ALIS threshold. And there's about sixty-two thousand households in Wyandotte County, so that's about half the households in the community. And so that just shows the significant level of need, but also the gap and one of the challenges we really have when we begin to look at, you know, what do we need to do in order to be able to moving assistance? How do we layer programs? How are you doing interventions that are obviously, you know, significant in terms of multi-generation so that you can break this vicious cycle? But it also puts a significant amount of demand on our agencies. Even when the number of people in poverty going down, twenty-seven thousand people is still a lot coming in the door, and there's only so much to go around in resources. So I'm deeply appreciative of the support of the Board of Public Utilities because you are, to my knowledge, the single largest funder of utility assistance within Wyandotte County. And the amount of money you put into the community does make a difference, especially when layered with United Way and our partner agencies who are also offering additional services and programs that families often need. This is the overview, and I will get into detail on both the utility hardship as well as where the additional support went, but I wanted to make sure we're clear in terms of how much the Board of Public Utilities is supporting United Way this year. Total support for the utility and hardship assistance programs combined with this additional support is six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is phenomenal, and at least in my tenure here, is a record number. What I mean by that is historically, BPU has authorized a hundred and five thousand dollars for the utility assistance program. That's part of the board's match for the BPU employee campaign. And as the campaigns ebb and flow, the board has always kept that hundred and five thousand dollars at that level because they know that a reduction would mean a loss in assistance to households. And then the hardship assistance program, which, well, I'll detail more later, but has about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in support. There was additional support in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, which I will detail more in a second, which we are deeply appreciative of because we had a lot of additional money during the pandemic. United Way was able to rally a lot of community partners and successfully land support for the CARES Act and ARPA detailed there, as well as other additional funds that we're able to pull as becomes available. But that money's expired, and BPU has done a great job of trying to plug that gap that the agencies really need in terms of delivering assistance into our communities, and we found a fairly effective mechanism of doing this. For example, with ARPA, five hundred and seventy thousand is overall, so that's any utility for anybody in Wyandotte County. But roughly about four hundred and seventy thousand of that came back for paying for electric and BPU water. So that's a lot of money that we were able to help move and do it in an expedited fashion over the course of a few months, and we're very proud of that work. For the utility assistance program, the total amount that was put into funding for this, based on the additional support plus the designated amount, was four hundred and twenty thousand. You can see the amount that we utilize to fund agencies and the amount that we need internally in order to basically sustain and operate the program. And I'll detail what agencies get funded as well as their historical record here in just a second. I want to make sure there's a chance to reflect on the numbers. To remind you of the program criteria, it is set, you know, a hundred and five thousand plus the additional funding that is offered. It is only for BPU services. Participants must be at a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level for the past thirty days and a Wyandotte County resident. You cannot exceed, exceed five hundred dollars for assistance. My client is eligible for assistance every twelve months, and we utilize a shared data platform called MAC Link in order to record assistance to show, you know, that there is not duplication of services, and so agencies can coordinate on who's paying what bill, and we have another check in place to make sure that we're not paying, you know, we're not exceeding those thresholds. We work with eight partner agencies, and you can see the funding totals that were provided to them in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. Obviously, most agencies received an increase, except for our colleagues at Von Trent, and I can mention something about them here in a second. But honestly, we look at agencies in terms of their historical legacy, the capacity in terms of what they're able to handle, their effectiveness and efficiency and handling dollars. Von Trent, for those of you might or may not be aware, is out in Bonner Springs. They are a great agency. They've had some changeover with their executive director. And as part of that, you know, we decided in partnership with them that it wasn't best to, you know, provide funding with them at the start of the year while they tried to spend down funds they had remaining. So that's why Von Trent is still very much in the mix, but they now have a new executive director in place. I'm sitting, sitting down with them here in a couple of weeks, and that'll kind of determine, you know, how much we're going to support them over the course of the rest of the year. Ultimately, they're the one brick and mortar shop that's in Bonner Springs in that area, and they do serve a lot of customers or a lot of individuals out of there, so they're important. But that kind of explains why there's that drop off in that number. Overall, since going back to two thousand and nine, which is about as far back as I can really go in terms of the historical records in MAC Link, we've provided together about one point eight million dollars in assistance to Wyandotte County, handling over ten thousand assistance payments to individuals. The average amount of assistance since two thousand and twenty, I've only done the averages for the last few years, but it's about three hundred dollars. I mean, you can see the total numbers of households served in two thousand and twenty-three were, you know, just, just over eight hundred, totaling in the calendar year expenditure about three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So that's a phenomenal level of result, you know, putting close to two million dollars, moving into the hands of individuals and to helping to pay down bills and provide assistance is a phenomenal impact, especially when you consider this is coming from agencies that are also providing other sorts of financial stability and financial empowerment mechanisms for the households that are ultimately coming through their door. The hardship assistance program, a little bit different pool, and here is the breakdown kind of of how the funding, including the additional support, has been authorized. Part of the funding does support our bilingual part-time case manager who handles the actual intake. She is headquartered in, she offices is here in Wyandotte County, and she is phenomenal at what she does. And as a Wyandotte County resident, we have the additional dollars that we have to support the program, and then the dollars that are held internally by BPU in order to basically honor the commitments that are made after we review all the casework. The difference in this program is the utility assistance program, aside from partner agencies, is far more income-based, but the hardship program is actually based on, you know, a series of qualifying hardship criteria. And those qualifying hardship criteria are really an important message, message because we have folks who are above that hundred and fifty percent federal poverty level line, but still have that one unexpected expense. And that's the sort of thing that can throw a household into turmoil. There was a piece of research from the Federal Reserve not long ago that found one in, about one-third of Americans don't have four hundred dollars cash to meet an unexpected expense. There are a lot of households that are certainly under strain right now. The pressure of inflation has been significant. I won't get into, I'm sure what many of you also follow in terms of the news, in terms of accumulation of debt and credit card delinquencies. These are the things that haunt me and that eventually show up in a lot of our, you know, call centers and what people see as that stressor that puts them nearly into crisis. Here are the qualifying hardship criteria. Health emergency, change in employment status or income has to be something that was involuntary, like a layoff or some sort of shutdown or idling, change in family composition or marital status or some sort of other unforeseen documented expense. Typically, you know, health emergencies, especially health emergencies that impact people's employment, tends to drive whatever we are seeing in terms of just a bulk category for folks that are coming in and really qualifying for the hardship program. They do have to provide documentation. It's not as neat and clean as an income thing, so you usually have to make sure that you're putting together sufficient documentation to justify and explain the story, which can take a moment, but it's also important to ensuring that, you know, the individual who's coming to us, that we're, are really in dire need. The applicant also has to have been a BPU customer with continuous service for at least six months. Again, allowable expenditures, BPU, water, and light utility services. They do have to provide paperwork. Assistance cannot exceed five hundred dollars. Customer is eligible once every twelve months, and we do track all assistance in MAC Link, which is our shared data platform, so that we have another internal check just to make sure that, you know, we're not doubling up or we're not, you know, we're staying within the program criteria. The program has been impressive. It was started in two thousand and thirteen, and we've made some tweaks along the way. But, you know, in the last decade or so, it's spent nearly about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, providing almost three thousand assistance payments to individuals. Average payment is a touch higher, but still, you know, pretty close, just over that three hundred dollar threshold, and we're serving about two hundred and seventy-five households a year. Two thousand and twenty-three was a touch higher in terms of household serve, was about three hundred and twelve. And that historically is a little bit closer to the average, at least since the pandemic had started. And we have, you know, expended a significant amount of money in trying to help sure that we have that safety net of both income as well as non-income based programs to try to help people that are out there. Again, though, when you think of the number of people in poverty, the number of households in poverty, you're like, okay, well, we're doing a lot, but you know, there still is a lot of need with our community, but BPU is certainly putting in their fair share when it comes to meeting these needs, so. When we look at two thousand and twenty-four, this is just a reminder of where the combined funding is at in terms of the amount available for assistance, what's supporting the case manager, and what we need to sustain the program. I did want to take a comment to kind of remind folks of the broader work of United Way and our partnership with BPU. BPU continues to run an absolutely solid United Way Workplace Campaign with BPU employees for the United Way, which we're incredibly proud of. Um, you know, we operate two one one, which is the call center that is a twenty four seven information and referral service. Um, two one one, you know, in just Wyandotte County last year handled nearly six thousand calls from folks that didn't know where to go for either utility assistance, housing, food pantries. And we wound up handling just short of seventy five hundred requests. Obviously, you know, one person could call in and say, hey, I need food and I need my utilities paid at the same time. Our call volume is expanding and exploding pretty dramatically, as you can imagine, especially since the pandemic. Um, total contacts since twenty nineteen are up by about a hundred and thirty five percent. And as a region, we cleared about a hundred and seventy five thousand calls in two one one. And so that's a lot of folks who maybe didn't know where to go. This is their first time navigating the system. They know one agency, but they don't know another, and so they needed to get help, and that's what they're turning to. The other real thing that we've been involved in is obviously, aside from our Impact One Hundred Funding, which supports a lot of nonprofits across Wyandotte County that many of you know. Vibrant Health, El Centro, Avenue of Life, um, you know, Economic Opportunity Foundation. You know, we've got our Catalyst Fund Program that's working with smaller nonprofits like Village Initiative to try to build their capacity. We've also got some special initiatives going. Family Empowerment Initiative works with Avenue of Life to do a two generation approach to families, especially with school age children to try to keep them housed. Because we found that when kids are in school and they are struggling and they are moving from housing unit to housing unit, they suffer, the family suffers. And we're really proud of the fact that we made about a fifty thousand dollar allocation to Avenue of Life, who's done a phenomenal job of reducing student homelessness with ACK School District. To help build in that two generation support, and that's a result of funding from the Seamer Foundation, who works nationally, almost primarily with United Ways. Debit card program was an inflation reduction, uh, was an inflation response initiative where we essentially worked with existing programs that had somebody, especially somebody who's maybe like coming out of the correctional system and is reentering society, doesn't have a lot of independent cash. Families that are struggling and did them a one time debit card payment. Depending on the household size ranging from eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars. Phenomenal program, um, and Wyandotte County agencies that we partnered with gave out about a hundred and forty of those. Um, over and we're still in the midst of administering that program. The school assistance program was a pilot program with six area schools, two of which are in Wyandotte County, believe it's Quinadero and Silver City. Um, and it's basically to help school employees that are struggling themselves financially. This program just got off the ground, and I think we've done about twenty five thousand dollars in assistance to about thirty four school employees. Um, and then we have Delta Dental, which we have been enrolling individuals as part of a partnership statewide in Kansas with Delta Dental to get free dental insurance. Last year, I think we did about six hundred and thirty enrollments and four hundred and sixty roughly of those were from Wyandotte County. Because El Centro, the Community Health Council and Vibrant Health do a phenomenal job, and since that program started, we've provided about one point seven million in free dental assistance to people in Kansas, so. There's a lot we're doing together, um, and this is kind of why when you start to think about it and look at the scale, we're talking tens of thousands of households served, millions of dollars invested. Over this last year, we've put about three point seven million just from what I could tell exclusively into Wyandotte County programs and services. And we couldn't do it without the support of the Board of Public Utilities, the employees that give the United Way Campaign. Because really, it's all about everybody chipping in what they have, paying part of their fair share, and that adding up to make a huge impact, so. I thank you for your time tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for the presentation. That this is, this drilled down exactly certainly what I was looking for, and I was the one who was most vocal about asking what we were looking for, so thank you for that. Um, you you know. Th- this is impressive work, and I and I certainly don't want to discount it. Um, but at the beginning of this presentation. Um, you showed us data that half of our households in this community are comprised of the working poor. Um, and. These are Band-Aids that we continue to to put on them with with respect to their utility assistance. Um. Again, United Way does a phenomenal job. BPU continues to give hundreds of thousands of dollars to this effort, and it's not enough. I mean, when I look at the base number of households that we wind up helping in any given year. Given the the data you showed us that twenty one thousand people are our working poor. To me, that just says it's a Band-Aid. It there's there's no fix to this, and so my question for you is. Um, you you represent the United Way of Greater Kansas City at this point. And you guys have partner organizations, sister organizations all over the country. And I wondered if um the United Way has made a concerted effort to approach the federal government. About um permanent subsidy um programs for communities like Wyandotte County. That have this type of disparate population.
That's an expansive question.
Sorry.
No, no, it's a great question, because, you know, my heart is, if we're not, we should be at a level at a level, because quite honestly, that level of resource is really the kind of investment, especially in areas with high levels of concentrated poverty. In some ways, you can say, yeah, we're just not doing enough, and other ways, it's like, yeah, but we're putting money into programs that are making a difference and. You know, you don't, you know, how do you eat the elephant? You eat it one bite at a time, which is a weird metaphor because nobody eats elephants, but you know, you get my point. Um, we have not, at least to my knowledge, we have made approaches to the federal government, particularly with the change in the leadership at United Way Worldwide. Um, there has been a deeper concerted effort, and there just was a recent announcement of funding from the Biden Administration where United Way will be playing a lead role. In terms of environmental impact and looking at communities that have historically experienced racism tied to environmental practices. Which is one way, and I think especially given the legacy of Wyandotte County, that we can try to leverage federal resources. Across other states, it has been federal dollars, but advocacy at a state level. In order to try and secure other unexpended or underutilized dollars to be invested in local communities. Um, so those have been the efforts that have kind of happened. We have a successful program called United for helping our neighbors on Missouri that utilizes TANF dollars. To invest within communities that have highly disparate levels of poverty. So effort, true, I mean, we are an independent network of affiliates of nearly a thousand. So it's kind of hard to say like we're all doing things a little bit differently, but you're right, you look at the numbers, I can do the math. It's like we have to have a larger level of resource and it'd be invested effectively and efficiently if we're going to really see the transformation and not wait another decade just to see. You know, a few thousand come off, because we did a lot of progress, we weathered the pandemic, and I think we couldn't have done that nearly as well ten years ago as we did now. But you're right, it's not enough.
Well, and and, you know, we've got federal programs that. Um, and yeah, Bill, I'm on my soapbox about universal service yet again. But we've got federal programs with permanent subsidies for um other utilities in in telephone and now broadband, although that's gone away and it will come back, but. Um, but we just, we don't even approach it for probably the two most basic utilities. Um, that that we all start with from the ground, and that's power and water. Um, and so I don't know, I guess I would just implore you to um push on your folks in DC to maybe. You guys are going to have a lot more uh pull um to try to sway the federal government than probably the utility industry is, so. Um, I guess I would just ask that you take that back to the folks.
No, for sure, and I'd say when we look nationally, I mean, it is housing and utilities that are neck and neck in terms of what we see in top demands with two one one. And we can direct people to a lot, but you're right, we have to use that data and I hate to say weaponize, but make it into something that is a far more compelling case. For our folks in DC and then maybe other places to make that level of investment, especially in areas like Wyandotte County.
I I certainly appreciate the um, the answering of the question, so thank you, and thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? So Rose, I'll I'll go back to uh pandemic, uh. You know, a lot of us was having having conversations with Kansas Housing over the Kira Program quite a bit, and. And we were trying to get a state to work closer with our local community. United Way, our local nonprofit groups in order to get money to our community faster than the. I think we got caught up when, you know, at a state at the state level, which was. Very and very ineffective and uh, you know, to the point to where I think you guys all lived through this like we did. Where it took months and months and months just to get a simple check to them. And much to understand the information we're providing to them so that they can process it and turn it around. On the Missouri side. The state does allocate money directly to Jackson County to provide to United Way, so that. That pipeline is much more productive, much more streamlined than it is on the Kansas side, and that would. I tried to challenge the state of Kansas, Senator, on uh. On uh coming up with a better process for our state and uh. Of course, that didn't go anywhere. The other thing that I would I would say is, uh, you know, I've raised the issue about other utilities. Uh, also stepping up and looking at the BPU model and trying to provide some type of assistance like the gas company. Other, you know, telephone company, telecommunications, you know, you know. Companies like that. But in addition to that, uh. The money to BPU, and I just made this statement the other day, the money that BPU provides. For utility assistance comes back to pay for the entire BPU bill. Now, you guys know quite well that all those charges are not BPU charges. Okay, so it would be good if the unified government would make some stronger effort too in matching our efforts. In order to provide utility assistance to this community. And that and that challenge is is out there for them. Any other questions, Todd?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, and I know Mr. Jordan did um address this, but. Our employees, which are fewer than the UG, they always um. They always come through for the United Way, I they always have, and I'm very proud of our employees and the amount of money they give.
I I I don't know, I mean, I don't want to misstate this, uh, but I'll check and verify, but I believe. BPU provides more United Way assistance than any other company in the in Kansas City, Kansas.
To my knowledge, that's correct, you have surpassed General Motors' bare facts.
We were like in the top three for a lot of years, I know that, with General Motors being ahead of us, but.
Yeah, so General Motors made a conscious decision a few years ago to make a corporate gift from General Motors. United Way, uh, US, United Way, America. And uh, so it's 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 not the same contribution levels locally. As they used to make, and uh, our other competitor was uh Procter and Gamble. Which downsized and then tried to recover, but uh, they're not back to where they used to be. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you all very much, appreciate your time.
Yep, no, sure, yep. And this was before you really came on. Right. Yeah. So, let me get to the agenda. Uh, that's okay, just. We're now into the general manager staff uh report, so first thing up is a customer service survey that we conducted uh several weeks ago. Uh, Bass Abby to come up and introduce our guest, we we took a completely different approach uh this year for that, and I hope the board uh. Uh, will be pleased with some of the results that's in here, I mean, there's there's things in here for us to be proud of. There's things for in here for us to uh look at as an opportunity, but I think it's very balanced, and uh, we did have a third party to conduct this, so Abby, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, I'd like to introduce uh Mr. Ryan Murray, who is here to talk to us this evening about BPU's Customer Service Survey. He is the Assistant Director of Community Research at ETC Institute. He's been there for fifteen years and graduated from KU with a degree in public administration. Mr. Murray has done everything from calling on surveys like the one that we administered. To large scale DOT projects requiring high level of interviews with Texas residents, manage large scale projects in Dallas, Salt Lake City, Las Vegas. San Francisco, and then transition fully to community survey research. Mr. Murray has conducted over five hundred statistically valid surveys. Including for clients like Water One, JCW, Lee Summit Water Utilities, Casey Water. The UG's Community Survey and various others for the county, along with many other local clients and other utility providers. Lastly, Mr. Murray is an elected official for Greenwood, Missouri, which has approximately seven thousand residents. And they are called the Alderman. He serves on the Board of Aldermen since April of twenty twenty three. So, Mr. Ryan Murray.
Thank you, members of the board, uh, for having me here tonight, thank you, Mr. Manager, it's appreciate being here. That doesn't move, so I'm going to go ahead and just stand over here by that.
It's all right.
All righty, Abby had a good plan there. So I've got a few notes, and I've also got the full report tonight, so if anybody has any detailed questions after, I'll do my best to answer honestly. Uh, but if I'm trying to espouse on some research that I'm not a hundred percent familiar with, I'll get a written response back to staff uh for the board. Uh, for those of you who aren't familiar with ETC Institute, we're based in Latha, Kansas. We've been there about forty two years, uh, locally owned and operated about forty two years ago. Our owner and founder, uh, she took out a five thousand dollar loan, started the business in her garage. Uh, eventually passed it on to her son, Chris Tatham, who's now our owner and CEO. Uh, he's our, well, not our, but he's my mentor, and I've worked under him for the last fifteen years. Uh, for the last thirty five years, our focus really has been on municipal governance, or at least government oriented uh organizations. Lots of DOT work, lots of counties, uh, we do employee surveys, parks and recreation surveys, business surveys. Uh, as well as customer satisfaction surveys, which we're really familiar with. Uh, for those of you who aren't familiar with ETC, we do a lot of the utility providers in the area, and I run a majority of those projects, not just locally, but also nationally. So I bring a little bit of that anecdotal side of what I've seen in other places uh to some of this research. But really, the best part of having the opportunity to speak to the board uh is really to frame up the project, because I think that's really the most important thing, is to understand what this data is and and next, how it's collected. Uh, but the purpose of this survey is really an objective assessment, so this isn't a report card. Uh, other than the fact that residents told you how they think, uh, how they feel, uh, and what they believe the quality of your services to be at that moment in time. So I like to put that little qualifier on the end there, because if you had a really bad day, uh, or if the power went out in your home that day. Your responses to the survey could be different, we call that a sampling uh error potentially, uh, so there's a margin of error on the results of about three and a half percent. We'll sometimes see that, uh, but really, I'd just like to let folks know, this is really a perception survey. We want to continue to monitor resident and customer perceptions over time, as you've done. I think your most recent survey was conducted in two thousand nineteen. But really, the purpose of this survey is to get a good sense of how residents are feeling about the quality and delivery of services. One of the other things that our firm has the ability to do with your data is compare to other national resources, so we do a yearly community survey where we ask about cost and reliability and. Uh, performance of services, so we'll have a few comparisons to show tonight. And one of the other purposes for BPU for this particular survey was really to help set a new benchmark. Uh, your prior survey results were were robust, they had a lot of good findings. Uh, but the overall response rate to that survey wasn't particularly high, which always limited the statistical reliability of the data. Moving forward, if you're to engage ETC Institute or another firm to conduct similar surveys in the future. You'll have a statistically valid benchmark from which to kind of compare yourself to moving forward. Now, it would have been great had we had uh maybe some survey conducted right after or post COVID. Uh, but really, what we're telling most of our governmental clients is that anything twenty one, twenty two is kind of just in the past. Expectations have changed significantly, we've seen major trends downward in our national benchmarking databases. And lately, we've been seeing some of our higher performing communities also see a decrease in items such as quality of elected leadership or value received for city tax dollars and fees. Uh, fees paid for electric or water utility services, and so we'll see some of that as well tonight. And the benchmarks provide a really good contextualization of how you performed. So we might see thirty one percent satisfaction with a given item, obviously, we're not necessarily satisfied with that particular result. But when we know the national average is comparable or close to our margin of error for those results. We know that other similar utility providers or other similar organizations are facing the same exact issues. When we talk about statistical statistical reliability or relevance, it really starts with the random sampling methodology. We mailed out a three page survey to a random sample of households within the county. We do a similar sampling method with the UG's wider survey, but they actually have neighborhood zones for which we're sampling, and so there's goals by neighborhoods, it's just a lot more robust. Um, of a sampling plan, and that's because county leaders on the other side tend to analyze those datas uh by neighborhood services. At six hundred and three completed residential customer surveys and eighty one completed business customer or commercial customer surveys. Uh, we have a really robust database with a margin of error of about four percent at the ninety five percent level of confidence. So if we were to go out a hundred times, get the same six hundred and eighty four surveys a hundred times, ninety five out of a hundred times, we'd get the same results plus or minus that margin of error. So fifty percent of people said yes, it could be as high as fifty four percent or as low as forty six percent are saying yes, and a hundred out of or ninety five out of a hundred times. There will be sampling errors, there will be those folks that have that. There will be sampling errors. There will be those folks that have that bad day. And that's why we calculate that at the 95% level of confidence, because five of those times, we could see numbers outside of that margin of error. But the reliability of the results is from that random sampling. Each household and within the county had an equal opportunity of being selected. And we actually selected every single commercial customer that you have. Uh, the county, or excuse me, BPU provided us the list of all your commercial customers. That included light industrial, uh, heavy commercial or large commercial, and then, uh, it was also small commercial businesses. We were able to conduct at least 21 industrial surveys, 10 large commercial surveys, and 50 small commercial surveys. That makes up that 81 commercial customers. The residential customers were all residents within Wyandotte County that had been randomly selected. Apologize here. Right. So one of the other things that I like to do is, is kind of explain what we saw in the results. The results will speak, uh, to each person a little bit differently. But from where I sit, satisfaction with the delivery of services is very high. Utilities is a particularly hard item to assess, because residents are always kind of assessing how much they're paying with the quality of that services. As we can see up at the top there, 81% of our residential and 79% of our, um, residential customers, excuse me, 81% of our residential, residential customers are satisfied with the overall quality of water. 74% of our commercial customers are satisfied with that service. 79% of customers are satisfied with the overall quality of electric services, 75% uh, on the commercial customers. When we compare our averages to national and regional averages, we see that the US average is, you know, just slightly below uh, where we are in terms of satisfaction with water and slightly above where we're at with satisfaction with electric utility services. What we're really looking for is concrete differences that exceed our margin of error of about 4%. So when you see a comparison to any national, uh, numbers or any trends from previous years, what you're really looking for is a difference of 4% to signify to us that that's a significant change. There's a real change of perception, uh, either year over year or from the national average to our particular survey results. But overall, uh, when we compare your results specifically to national and regional averages, our overall satisfaction is relatively high. When we talk about rates, we compare favorably, but when you look at the Kansas City and US averages at the bottom, only 31% of residents nationally are satisfied with water service charges and 28 satisfied with electric service charges. We're actually well above, uh, or right there with, uh, most of those numbers. But then we get to into the Kansas City metro average. We see satisfaction, uh, increase quite a bit or quite significantly, where 40% are now satisfied with water and 35 with electric services. The electric services were still very comparable. And for the most part, we're still relatively comparable with our water services, uh, rates as well. This is where I was saying earlier, we might not be satisfied with the 37% combined satisfaction of our residential customers with our rates, but we know other communities nationally and regionally are both dealing with those same issues. So our overall perceptions, our overall opinions of our rates are similar to what other people are seeing in other communities. One of the things that we do like to assess is interactions with staff. That's one of the areas for which residents can actually make kind of an informed, uh, choice or an informed rating of your services. When it comes to rates, you know, people don't frequently move in and out of communities, so you don't always have the great comparison. Uh, but when we talk about visuals or how you've interacted with staff, uh, we do get some really good numbers here. Now, most of the contacts for both residential and commercial customers were billing related concerns or electric, uh, service-related concerns. And about half or a little over the half of our commercial customers have actually had an interaction with us over the last two years. Most of the contacts for both sides, commercial and residential customers, were both with the office, very few with field staff, and then some with a combination of both, more so on that commercial side than our residential customers. Most, again, are making on both commercial and residential customer sides, are making that contact by phone, fewer in person, fewer by email, and again, fewer, uh, by social media or by mail. About 50% of our residential customers have, uh, have, uh, excuse me, observed our field staff within the last two years. And fewer, uh, 42% of our commercial customers have observed our field staff. So overall, there's a sense that about half of our communities observed us in the field or at least uh, participated or at least contacted us within the last couple of years. So about half of our 600 and so surveys are indicating, yes, I've had contact with you. We talk about satisfaction with residential, uh, versus commercial customers, really because we have statistical significance within each one of those samples. I wanted to show you both the data sets instead of separating them out and kind of combining them together. It gives you a sense of maybe where commercial customers are less concerned about particular service items and where maybe residential customers are a little bit more concerned. Uh, for example, it's interesting how easy the department staff is to contact. Residential customers significantly more satisfied than our commercial counterparts. But when we talk about overall quality of service, now our residents are less satisfied than our commercial customers. So there's some nuanced differences between the two groups. But for the vast majority of these items, or actually all of them, more than half of our respondents who indicated that they'd interacted with us are giving us positive ratings. Now, down at the bottom, the easy to contact, there is a group of people that are indicating, hey, it might not be the easiest to contact, but we know with working schedules and things like that, it can always be a little difficult. We talk about satisfaction with field staff, identifying field staff, professional attitude, how staff cleaned up their work areas when finished, all received exceptionally high ratings. And then we get to staff repair of your lawn or landscaping. That gets back into more regulations, more rules. We know that not every resident in the community fully understands those repair rules or how our lawns are supposed to look when we get back to work. In my particular city, when public works digs up a lawn, the only things we're required to do is lay seed and hay, and we constantly get complaints, uh, for that particular amount of work. So they're expecting sod and all this other stuff, and it's just written in our city code that that's not quite, uh, what we're to be doing. I think a similar situation, and that's why we see a slight reduction in satisfaction with those field staff areas. We talk about service restoration. We also want to understand what's your satisfaction levels or what are your perceptions related to uh, our disconnections in service. Disruptions across residential and commercial counts are very similar. Only 13% of residential customers and 9% of commercial customers have had a unplanned disruption to their water service. When we talk about electrical services, over half of our residential customers, about 44% of our commercial customers indicated that they'd had either water or electric service, uh, interruption. So there's a good proportion of those folks in the electrical service items. But when we look at specific ratings, uh, to the water service disruptions, we are looking at a very small number of respondents, which the margin of error can grow on those particular questions. This is the water service timing. We asked respondents if they'd had an unplanned disruption, how satisfied they are with the amount of time it took for that service to be restored. A vast majority are, are very satisfied or satisfied, column with only a few, about one in five, a little bit more than that. Potentially one in four in that neutral dissatisfied or very dissatisfied column. When we're on these, uh, types of slides, ETC Institute always looks at neutral ratings as a passing grade. It means a respondent maybe couldn't provide a positive response. They weren't blown away by the exceptional amount of time that it took, but they weren't dissatisfied with the amount of time it took either. And as we see here, none of our commercial customers were dissatisfied with that restoration of service time. We talk about electric service, uh, timing and restoration of that service. We're talking about significantly more respondents. We still see high levels of satisfaction, relatively low levels of dissatisfaction. Only 10% of our respondents or 1 in 10 of our residential customers are indicating they're dissatisfied with the amount of time that it took. So overall, when we do have unplanned disruptions, which on the water side is very infrequently, on the electrical side, a little bit more frequently according to respondents, we're performing really well in terms of the amount of time that's expected for us to, to get that service back on. One of the biggest problems with utilities is that folks are, uh, asked to pay for them, uh, that we find that, uh, in just about every community we work with. Uh, so we asked about services, uh, related to billing. It's one of those areas that's always difficult, because we know we're going to get rated down. The two bottom items there, satisfaction with the amount charged for water and electric services is down there in the 30%. The reason that I wanted to contextualize that earlier is because I did not want people to think that we're out of the realm of normality. Uh, you know, both of those ratings, both the blue and the green bar are very similar to what our national and regional averages are. So even though they're significantly below all of our other ratings, they probably are concerned for some folks that are looking just at the numbers. We know contextually, most communities experience those same difficulties. And if we look at the top of the list, we have very good satisfaction numbers towards the top. And into the middle, we see a bulk or a majority of our respondents giving us satisfied responses. Most of the services that respondents believe should receive the most emphasis is ease of contacting us, ease of understanding that bill, accuracy of the bill, responsiveness to billing concerns. So as I mentioned earlier, most respondents who've had contact with us, our contact is about billing our electrical services specifically. When we get to into perceptions, we, we always want to ask some agreement questions. We, we want to understand what you think about us. You know, each organization, particularly government organizations, have a mission. Uh, and as part of that mission, we typically strategic plan around it. And so as we're strategically planning, we come up with ideas for which we want to embody, or we want the organization to embody those ideals. Most of the statements in this list were directly related to initiatives or ideas that the BPU staff indicated were important to make sure that we maintained. We're at least told residents or explained to residents, we're trying, uh, with all of these items. We see very high ratings from all of the commercial customers across the board. The only item that we see a slight reduction is BPU's fiscally responsible, but we know that budgets are extremely difficult to understand. Uh, we know that not everybody's participating in the process. These are perception-related items, but our commercial customers are extremely satisfied. We talk about efficiently providing electric services, benefiting the local economy, being easy to do business with. We're receiving exceptionally high, very satisfied and satisfied numbers from both our residential and commercial customers. We also wanted to compare your services to other utility providers. Gas, telephone, and internet and cable were compared with water and electricity. We asked respondents how satisfied they are with the overall value received from those services. Water and electricity came in second and third, very high ratings compared to telephone and internet and cable. And I do believe that there was probably some sense that the weather was starting to get a little bit warmer. Our gas bills were probably starting to go down slightly during the time of administration. If we administered the survey in the summer, we might see electricity further down the list as our electric bills go up. And as we get into the winter months, we'd likely see a little bit more value for that service as those rates go down again. We talk about comparing our water and electric charges as to others in the community or specifically in the metro region. We asked respondents specifically, how do you think our rates compare? Most respondents are indicating they don't think they're less expensive or about the same. 63% or about two-thirds of our respondents are indicating it's likely more expensive. Now, this is a great educational opportunity. Rate studies are a phenomenal way to prove where our rates actually stand within the community or within the metro region. And we could probably do a lot to turn around this particular slide if you did a survey again in two or three years. With that, I'll take any questions. I wanted to make sure I hit the high-level items. The full report explains all of the findings, including the methodology. And ETC Institute, like I mentioned, we're based in Olaheta, Kansas. Everybody's got my contact information. If there's any additional questions beyond tonight, please make sure to reach out to staff and we'll get written responses back.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Manager, and, um, thank you for that review. Most impressive. Um, to your last point, why do you think in the next couple of years that there'd be a change in public perception as to, you know, how our rates favor? I mean, what in this metropolitan area especially do you think would, would lead to a change in that perception?
I, I think that education, uh, is going to be the core piece there. So I, it feels like to me, based on conversations that I'd had with staff, that our rates aren't necessarily the highest in the region. Um, but it seems obvious from the survey results that residents don't understand that. So I think if BPU makes a concerted effort to publicize and then educate respondents on the relative rates compared to other Kansas City metro providers, you will have an excellent opportunity of kind of switching those results. Hey, we maybe are less expensive than some of our nearby communities. It's really going to take an effort by PPU to analyze some of the perception-related items, and now you have to communicate on those. So it won't just happen overnight. It won't happen unless we educate on it. So we'll need to message and educate respondents on where we really are over the next couple of years before reassessing. And why I use the next couple of years is because I typically would recommend that community organizations like this do surveys every two to three years. You could also extend that out to five years, but I, I do recommend against the every-year survey, because I don't think in a year you could do the rate study, publicize the results, educate the public, and then see a return on your investment. But I think over the course of a couple of years, you can internalize that data, begin to educate and communicate on it, and then you'll see a return on those.
Are you speaking to a relative comparison with other market areas for, um, for that? I mean, because I, for one, was under the delusion that we perhaps were out of culture in the region, and I sit here. So comparatively speaking, with, um, other utilities and what we're charging, how that might be, uh, shown, you know, in comparison?
Yeah, and I could be mistaken, but from what I understand, you are definitely not the most expensive electric or water utility provider in the region. And I could be mistaken on that, but that's what I was led to believe. And so that's why I assumed that if we were able to message on that particular item, we could probably turn that two-thirds that think were most, more expensive into either that about the same or less expensive category. So we'll take, actually showing the evidence, if we are cheaper or not. Uh, if we're not, obviously, it will be difficult to turn the tide. Uh, but and the idea was, is that from what I'd heard from staff that I'd been working with, that our rates were slightly lower than some of our competitors in the region.
Okay, well, thank you. I'd like to see that as well. So, Mr. Manager.
The challenge for us is when we compare our utility, electric, and water to other communities, we need to talk about electric rates and water rates and make those comparisons and not the entire bill, because the entire bill has many other charges on there that BPU is not responsible for.
And that's what I was going to get at too, is, is that's part of the education.
No, and I, I'd want to stick with, you know, kilowatt and then with water. I mean, I, I only, I mean, and then of course pass that. I mean, just when it comes to the actual, you know, yeah, what we're actually billing for our consumption, I mean, for our production and consumption. Um, thanks. And I would love to see a microcosm of this, of your, thank you again for this. Some of the highlights put in our, in our BPU connection that we send out to show that for those who feel that it's unfavorable or there might be an unfavorable response, especially among the residential that receive this, that um, many in the community or around there, actually, uh, the majority seem to feel as if the areas of interest regarding customer service and others were actually being
Yeah.
uh, favored, met favorably according to your survey. I'd like to see, uh, two or three of your charts maybe included in that, just, uh, to send it out in our connections, which is our, our publication.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make that available.
If that would be a decision that would be made. I don't do the introduction of that, but if that were something, just to share with those that, okay, okay. Thank you.
Yep, and it's, it's a great point what General Manager brought up. You all are at a disadvantage with your billing. Um, when the bill arrives, it's not just water, uh, and electric. Uh, there are, from what I understand, there's multiple other line items on that particular bill. That is always going to be difficult for respondents to kind of take in and understand. But it's even more impressive when we look at our contextuals, when we say, what are the rates for water? What are the rates for electric? And we have US and then regional averages to compare to. Even though your bills are probably heavier than what some of our other competitors, for example, Lee Summit Water, it's just a water and wastewater bill. Um, Water One, same thing. Johnson County Wastewater, just a sewer bill. So when you're thinking about these other competitors in the region that we survey with frequently, and we're comparing you to their averages, you're actually performing relatively favorably to other providers in the region who are a single-line billing, uh, which is not the situation that BPU is in. And so that should always be taken into account. It doesn't always shine through the data, uh, but through staff recommendations or review of the results, they can definitely help kind of pull together that picture and kind of help us understand we're actually in a maybe a better position than what the data is even saying.
Well, there's an ongoing effort to segregate the bills, to show that we want, so that when you retake this in two years, if in fact you do, we'll be able to certainly show that we're not responsible or we're not, we're no longer billing for that. One other quick question. Of the 608 residential, what was the response of the percentage? I don't know how many you sent out and then got back, but approximately, what was the return or the percentage that was returned?
Yeah, for residential customers, it was the best return that we've had in, in UG history. Um, the, the Unified Government Survey is about seven pages, which I think played dramatically into the response rate, but we had about an 18% response rate. In the full survey results, you will find towards the back of your tabular data and also your charts and graphs, a full demographic, uh, representation of the results. So not only were the results randomly sampled, but the residential results actually match very closely the true demographic makeup of the community in regards to the demographic factors that we, that we asked.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, members. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Uh, next is our 2023 annual audits. I'll ask Laurie to come up and, you know, introduce our guests.
Good evening. First off, uh, before we get to the presentation, I just wanted to let you know, um, so tonight we'll be presenting the final results, uh, and highlights of the 2023 audited financial statements and the supplemental schedules that were, um, provided to you earlier. So with me tonight, um, I have, um, members of our team from, uh, Forbus, LLP, Jacob Holman is partner, and Julie Grundle, uh, Senior Associate. So, uh, after I get done, Jacob will give a highlight, uh, of the audit itself. Just to give you a little bit of background on the timing of the audit, uh, we began our audit around the second week of March. Um, and over the period of time, we covered a wide range of areas and, uh, tested multiple processes, which all affected our financial statements. And the audits are not only about reviewing financial activity and estimates, but are looking at future accounting pronouncements and changes that may impact, uh, BPU and how we're preparing for them. So, um, I'll start by giving you an overview of the audited financial statements that you received and how we ended the year. Um, then Jacob will come up and discuss in detail, uh, information behind the footnotes and the audit process. Um, the audited financial statements and the document that will be, will be part of our overall BPU. The audited financial statements in the document that will be will be part of our overall B P U's annual comprehensive financial report. And it will also be incorporated into the Unified Government's annual financial report. So once our report is approved, B P U will proceed with the preparation of the full annual comprehensive financial report for submission to the G F O A, the Government Finance Officers Association, for consideration of the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And this will be our forty-third consecutive year. A few months ago, we presented to you the preliminary December twenty twenty-three results, which were prior to the completion of our annual audit. And at that time, I identified some additional items that still need to be completed. The items were our actuarial report for Brusher Creek Coal Company retirees' healthcare and the land reclamation report, contract retainage for our construction projects. And we had to needed to implement our Gatsby ninety-six, which was I I T subscriptions. This is a Gatsby pronouncement we needed to adopt. And then finally was additional payment accruals for servicing materials in twenty twenty-three. And as a result, the total impact between the statements of revenues and expenses and our change in that position resulted in a positive seven million. And I'll kind of go over why that variance when I get to the report, so. So just to look at our revenues, in comparison to prior year, we were down about seven point seven percent. The fluctuation of the E R C between doing an over collection, under collection in one year and over collection and the next year kind of results in in that variance being a little bit higher. So overall, if you take the E R C over and under collection out of the two years or whatever, there's a net impact of about almost three million dollars. So looking at our budget, we were down about two point three percent. So electric was down about ten point two million or ten point two million to budget. And water was up about one point eight, so. In twenty twenty-three, we did recognize a fourteen point eight million under recovery, so that fell into our twenty twenty-four report. And then from the end of twenty twenty-three, we have recognized an over recovery of four point one million. So that basically reduces our revenue in twenty twenty-three, and we are recognizing that in the first six months of twenty twenty-four. Our operating expenses, in comparison to twenty twenty-two, we were down about five point six percent. In comparison to budget, we were down about six point four percent. Some of the variances between our twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, our purchase power was down about eleven point eight million, while our fuel was down about twenty-three point one million. T N D was also down about two hundred and thirty thousand. Production was up about four point one million, and then our general administrative was up about ten point four million. General administrative was up due to the Gatsby sixty-eight, just the the activity of that and the market value of that from that actuarial report. On the water side, water production was up about a hundred and seventy thousand, while transmission distribution was down about six hundred thousand. And the G N A, which is a result of Gatsby sixty-eight, was two point four million. So overall, our change in that position, before I go there. One thing I wanted to talk about on our operating expenses, we did have our actuarial report for Gatsby seventy-five, which is our retirees' healthcare actuarial report that we have to do or record each year. So one of the changes that we made in that actuarial report is recognizing since our population of employees has kind of gone more fifty percent over into our tier two space, we redid our actuarial report to recognize the difference between the healthcare that would need to be provided between the tier one and tier two. So that it did ultimately result in about a seven million drop in expenses over the course of the life of during for the actuarial report. So we did record that in the financial statements at the end of twenty twenty-three. So our change in that position at the end of the year, we had a positive thirty-six point eight million against a previous year about forty-nine point three. We projected to be about twenty-seven point four million budget. So electric ended up with a positive twenty-five point five and water had a positive eleven point two million. And then just a couple of our metrics, looking at our cash positions. Yep. So one change with the reduction of expenses and everything that did, as we looked at our rolling twelve months of expenses, that did impact our days cash on hand, so we ended up with about ninety-seven days at the end of the year. I think the preliminary showed it about ninety-two days. And then looking at our debt coverage, the the reduction of expenses also helped our debt coverage. So we ended up at the end of the year with a total combined at two point six seven times, with electric at two point five two times and water at two point two six. Ask if you have any questions about that. Yes.
Is there a a sweet spot on days cash on hand? What was the target we'd like to be at, you know, in a perfect world?
When we went through our rate study and we did our financial guidelines, the target that we identified is a hundred and twenty days. That was to build over over a period of time. It wasn't to just do it immediately, so.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, I'll turn it.
The rating agencies are asking for higher than that, but you know, we got to be realistic as to how, what we can actually try to achieve without raising rates beyond what where we have.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Jacob to go over the audit report.
Good evening, Members of the Board, General Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Tonight, I'm going to go over the twenty twenty-three audit results of the financial statement audit. Like Lori said, my name is Jacob Holman, a partner with Forvis here in Kansas City, specializing in the public sector space, including utilities. First off, I want to go talk about the status update and what services we were engaged to perform. Then I'll talk a little bit high level about a scorecard, and then I'll wrap it up with this letter that's in front of you tonight. So scope of the audits, we were engaged to perform two audits, the financial statement audit, which we'll go over tonight, and then potentially a compliance based audit over the federal grant awards. So we looked at the federal grant awards that were received and expenditures during the period, and that requirement was was not necessary based on the the volume of expenditures during the year. So tonight, really, the focus is really going to be on the financial statement audits. From a status update, we are substantially complete with the twenty twenty-three financial statement audits. The the largest open items really are just making sure that there's not additional subsequent events that need to be disclosed. So events that happened in twenty twenty-four, our audit report, audit procedures go all the way through when we issue the date, the date of the audit report. The other thing really is just the approval of the over under E R C that that will be discussed here tonight. From a scorecard, you know, really, I like to start with, really, what are the things ten thousand foot level that that if I was sitting in the board that I think are the most important as it relates to a financial statement audit? Really, the first thing is really just that it was a good audit experience. Management was well prepared, their records were well kept and in clean order, and they were very friendly and courteous to my team throughout the process. So this is a very long audit process. Generally, we start in the fourth quarter, work with management for about a week or two on what we call planning and risk assessment. And then we come back out for several weeks, probably about four to six weeks to in March and April to wrap up this financial statement audit, so. The the next thing really from a scorecard is I like to talk about significant accounting policies. There are two new accounting standards that were adopted during the year. So if you're looking at your significant accounting policies, you will notice those. They were Gatsby ninety-four, public, private, and public, public partnerships. And then Gatsby ninety-six, subscription based I T arrangements. Both of those standards, really what they do is is bring items that would historically only have to be disclosed in a footnote as as a potential commitment and brings those to the face of your financials as a right to use certain assets, so think software. And then a liability, so a present value of your your payment streams, you'd have to record that as a liability. So last year, when I presented, we talked a little bit about leases. That really brought your leases from a disclosure only item to a potential asset and a liability where you grossed up your balance sheet. Now you're having to do the same thing with your software contracts. So we did a completeness, a completeness exercise to make sure that management had a complete list of of those type of contracts and that they were analyzed and the accounting was correct. At the conclusion of that, really, there was not a lot of material impact to the utility. There is one new footnote disclosure, note thirteen, that talks about some commitments out there for software that the contract has been entered to, but the software has not been live as of twelve thirty-one. The next thing I just wanted to point out from a scorecard that that Lori also mentioned is is really the certificate of achievement and financial reporting from the G F O A. So the utility has received that for over forty years. You received that certificate for your your last set of financial statements, and and this set of financial statements will be submitted for that award too. So previously, I've said on on the review committee for that, is the the G F O A is a nonprofit trade association for for government finance officers. And what that does is government finance officers that are part of that trade association really take your set of financials through a really extensive checklist. Hundreds of hundreds of items and really use their their knowledge of the industry, use that checklist that's provided by the G F O A to really make sure that that you have a complete set of financials and and that you're following all of the requirements, both within the the G F O A recommends as well as your government accounting standards board. So you've received that certificate for over forty years straight, and I think that that's something that should be really proud of. The next thing really from a scorecard is really, I just wanted to talk about journal entries. As part of any financial statement audit, if there was material journal entries that were uncovered by our team, we would discuss those tonight, and I wanted to point out that there was none that was recorded that that my team found through the audit process. So when I go over this letter, you you will notice that there was four that we passed upon. Really, management has controls for those items in place, so it's not a control related issue. Both management and and Forvis, both agreed individually and the aggregate, that those entries were not material. The last thing really from a scorecard is controlled deficiencies. Our audit is performed in accordance with government auditing standards. Government auditing standards would would require us to include those deficiencies in in your set of your financial statements at the very back with a government auditing standards opinion. And I think it's good to point out that there is no controlled deficiencies in that letter. So I think that that's that's something definitely we should be pointing out. Okay, okay. So this slide really just talks about the scope of our audit. Management prepared the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Our audit is performed both in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States. Those standards really require us to do audit procedures, both at at what we call at the beginning of the audit, which is risk assessment. As part of risk assessment, we look at the internal control environment of the utility. So we do a walkthrough of of key controls in each major transaction cycle. So the transaction cycles that we looked at for the utility were the the I T general controls, the entity level controls, the cash inflows, the cash outflows, payroll and investing and financing. So if there was any issues as a related to financial reporting that came out of any of those transaction cycles, we would have communicated that as part of that gagus opinion. In addition to that, our job is to make sure that the line items on the face of your financials are materially accurate as well as the the footnotes are are complete. So at the conclusion of the audit, we give an opinion. The financials in front are that are going to be finalized. Management actually prepares, our job as auditors is to give an opinion on those financial statements. So we we are prepared to give what's called a clean or unmodified opinion. That means we believe that you guys have materially accurate financials and and complete disclosures. So that's the highest level opinion, the opinion that you would want as a board. All right, I'll I'll go through this real fast. The next couple of slides talks about other information accompanying your audited financial statements. In addition to the actual basic set of financial statements, there will be an introductory section as well as a statistical section that gets filed when you when you apply for that certificate with the G F O A for certificate of achievement. The the introductory section and the statistical section are are great reads. The statistical section has ten years of financial data. So if you're looking at trends, the statistical section is a great place for the for the board to really understand what what did the finances look like ten years ago and how has that trended over ten years? So a lot of information. In addition to that, the introductory section has what's called management discussion and analysis. And really what that includes is three years of data and narrative that really talks about how did how did everything trend and why did the numbers change? So not only just the numbers, but but really the why. So if you're looking for the why, the M D N A is a great place to look for that. So some required communication, I'll go over some required communication real quick. There was no unusual policies or methods, no alternative accounting treatments. Management's judgment and accounting estimates, there were several accounting estimates that we consider to be significant as part of our audit process and that we had a heavy focus on. The first one is allowance for doubtful accounts. So we looked at subsequent collections to make sure that that allowance was reasonable, and there was not a management bias in that estimation process. At the conclusion, there were no concerns as it related to that estimate. The next one is the regulatory asset and regulatory deferred inflow. So that's really your over under collection of your E R C. So we we ensured that that all the line items in that that calculation on the E R C would seven five. You guys would be overfunded by about thirty-one million. And if if you actually earn one percent less than what you expected and it was five point seven five, you'd be be underfunded and have a liability of eighty-two million. So that's a very wide swing based on your expected rate of return. And I just wanted to make sure you understood, kind of when we say significant estimate, that's a really good disclosure that shows how material that estimate is. Financial statement disclosures, like we talked about, note thirteen, subscription based I T arrangements. There there is a commitment disclosure of about a million dollars for software that the contract has been entered into. The software has not had a go live date with the utility yet. Onto page ten of of this communication, talks about our uncorrected misstatements. So there is four entries that we worked with management on, and management has controls in place to identify these. Both management and Forvis, like I said earlier in the presentation, believe that these are not material to the financials and they were not recorded. So at at the back of the the management representation letter, you will see a list of of what what these are from a dollar amount. You also see the the face of the financials in a summary, a summary portion that shows what your financials would look like if these were recorded. So the first one is around self insurance liabilities. It's actually to decrease the liability. The reason for that is there was reliance on a third party attorneys for that self insurance liabilities. And really, just from a time perspective of when those attorneys responded, management decided it was not a material number to the financials, so they did not update that. The next one is really a classification on your income statement from the pilot, really to reclass it from non operating expense to transfer. So not the dollar amount of of the pilot or or the, it's really just a classification of moving it up a a couple spots. And really, there's there's government accounting standards boards, which is GAAP, which is what your financials are in, as well as the the G F O A, which is that trade association that gives the certificate. Just have a little different view on where that should go, and that's why that's on here. The next one is increasing capital assets related to FEMA reimbursements. Capital assets were reduced for certain FEMA reimbursements of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Accounting standards would say that that would actually show up, should show up on your income statement. Again, not material, only a a a couple hundred thousand dollars as it relates to the overall financial statements. And the last one is is really around a disclosure only, so not the face of your financials, around your risk management footnote impact. So what that's showing is there is a roll forward. What that's showing is there is a roll forward of of your self-insurance liabilities. The beginning-ending roll forward of that liability does not include the self-insurance for the the health insurance. So. The amount that was was owed Blue Cross Blue Shield for health insurance at the year end. So. The activity does show that, really, the beginning and ending does not show that. I I believe it's about a million-dollar liability. It is appropriately accrued for. Management did not include that in there so that that that. Roll forward would agree to your self-insurance liability on your face, the Blue Cross Blue Shield goes into accounts payable. So that's that's why it's not included.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Do we have a definition of what we consider? What's the materiality level?
I I I generally don't share that exactly, but I can tell you how how we come up with a materiality. Our materiality is is set from as a profession. And really, we base that based on equity, total assets, and then revenue as a percent.
Okay. I'll be following up with you, Bill, or Lori.
Yeah, and and I'm happy to discuss kind of offline more details as specifics. Generally, we don't tell management our overall scope and and dollar amount, because then there there could be some manipulation based on that dollar.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Disagreements with management, there's no matters that are reportable. Consultations with individuals outside the engagement team, there's no matters that are reportable. There was no consultation with other accountants. Significant issues discussed with management, we had significant discussions around the adoption of Gatsby ninety-six to ensure that that was appropriately adopted. No difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Other material communications, there will be a letter that will be signed by management, the conclusion of the audit. Really, that that letter is a standard letter that just says that they are open and honest and and really formalizes some of the documentation and communication we had throughout the audit process. So that's really at the conclusion. That's all I have. If there's any questions, I'm I'm happy to take those now.
Is there a typical number of uncorrected misstatements, you know, that category? Are we in a a normal range of that, based on your experience in auditing other organizations?
Yeah, so that's a that's a good question. I I I think for. An entity in the public sector, you guys have a lot fewer entries than what I'm seeing in the industry. So and and the good thing is, whenever I have either an entry that we actually record or what we call a pass adjustment. Anytime we have one of those, we have to actually analyze that for a control deficiency. So. Every time we see one of those, we have to say, we have to step back as auditors and say, is this really a control-related item that I need to communicate to the board that we have a control-related issue? So. Management has controls to to ensure that those four items are are known and are tracked. So I think that that's good to point out as well, which, like I said, that's not common in the profession.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You mentioned. Self-insurance and health insurance. Would you, would you, would you elaborate a little bit more on those, the the two and the difference?
Sure. So so you guys are self-insured for several lines of business. Health insurance is one of those lines of business. So. As part of the audit process, we look at any estimates and and really self-insurance i- is a large estimate for an organization. So. Health insurance specifically, you guys use Blue Cross Blue Shield as administrator. So we will actually get some reports from Blue Cross Blue Shield. We call it a lag triangle. That shows what is your claim history? And really, because that's an estimate at year-end that says essentially, how many people have went to the doctors and and how much does the utility owe for those doctor's visits? But Blue Cross Blue Shield has not requested reimbursement yet. So that liability for that estimate, it it is accrued for, it's just accrued for in the light item accounts payable. So when you look at your footnote disclosure, that ending accrual will be really like your general liability. Accruals and workers' comp accruals, not the Blue Cross Blue Shield accrual.
And when you mentioned the liability, did you say that liability was particularly something that was a risk factor for our organization?
I I think it's a risk factor as it relates to accounting estimates. So I'm not saying it's a risk factor for the organization. But but any estimate in your financials, we want to make sure that we spend more time on to make sure that there's not management bias and that there's an appropriate. Appropriate method for that that accrual.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's two resolutions that were part of your agenda packet. So the first request is for the approval of the over-recovery of the energy rate component, and that was for the third and fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three. In the amount of four million eighty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. This will be recovered over the first and second quarters of twenty twenty-four. So that is Board Resolution fifty-two ninety-nine. Would ask for your approval.
This is Rose. I move to approve resolution number five-two-nine-nine.
Mary, I second.
Hey, we have a motion to approve resolution number five-two-nine-nine in a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Croneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney, Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
The second request is for the approval of the twenty twenty-three audited financial statements and supplemental schedules that were just presented tonight. That is Board Resolution fifty-three-hundred.
I recommend approval of Resolution fifty-three-hundred.
Brett, I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve resolution number fifty-three-hundred. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Croneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney, Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next item, miscellaneous comments. I only have one, is I would say. It's been a rather long day with the last-minute change for work session and then the additional. Agenda items that was placed on that, but. Even before that, we had a policy meeting discussion this morning, so. Don't know that Rose was expecting all of this on her birthday, but wow.
Happy birthday.
But she's hung, she's hung in there all day with us, so happy birthday, Rose.
Thank you, Bill. I've only had three Diet Cokes today for those who were in attendance this morning.
Mr. President, that's all I have. I'll turn it back over to you for, whoops, is there anyone? Yeah, is there anyone? Wishing to speak about the items we covered on the agenda tonight? Okay, nobody online, nobody here, all right?
I have one person online.
You got one person? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, Dr. Hall, if you can state your name, address for the record, and you have three minutes.
It'll probably be short. My name is Alma Hall. I live in Kansas City, Kansas. I am gonna ask a couple of questions. Number one, I is the, could we have access to the PowerPoints on about the United Way?
The PowerPoint will be on our website, if you want to look at it there. Will that work for you?
Yes, and then, of course, the other one. And then my last question is, so, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't walk around like I know it all, never. On that PowerPoint, it stated that half, close to half of the residents here live in in poverty. So la- I I would, I've been going to several of the meetings. The last time I went to the U U G meeting. I requested to see if both organizations could calibrate the total amount of. Taxes or money that is being asked to our community, so that way we can understand how much money. As a taxpayer, we are paying overall with with between Unified and BPU. And I have yet to receive any information from Unified. I'm hoping that you guys could provide me that information or share it publicly. This is just so we can have a better understanding as taxpayers. And that's about it.
All right, thank you.
I'm not sure what what.
Asking for you.
Yeah, U G information for what? I'm sorry, this is Haley. I didn't quite understand specifically what it is you're differentiating, please, ma'am.
So I'm asking for the total amount that the taxpayer is paying between. Between the two organizations, BPU and Unified Government.
Well, Ms. Hall, this is Mary Gonzalez. Your taxes, that varies from person to person.
No, ma'am, I'm not asking about taxes. I'm asking about the money that every time, let's say, for example, there's gonna be. What is it, the apartments that are going up by in town, they, and I'm just throwing a number, I I'm not saying it's. Let's say they're asking ten million dollars for from the taxpayers. So that goes to the taxpayers, right? And then there's another project.
You have twenty seconds.
That's coming up. Last time I was there with you guys, I think they were asking about three million dollars from taxpayers, and I'm just. I'm not looking at my notes right now, but I'm just asking if both organizations could get together, figure out how much money the taxpayers. The organizations are asking the taxpayers. Do I make sense?
Yeah, it's it's, you makes, no, well. But this portion of the agenda is to make comments on agenda items that we had this evening. And I don't think that this, what you're talking about now is Jermaine do what we, what was on our agenda this evening. So this is a topic that if you want to bring it up. During the at the next meeting during the visitor comment section, that'd be fine, but this is for, this section of the is for comments on the agenda items.
Would that that be relatable to what United Way provides to the community? It is, I mean, it seems like we have a high poverty in our community and. Your organization, the BPU organization are supporting, so it's kind of like a a wheel going in and out. So I'm just trying to understand where can we find a solution as a community?
If you give us, I'm not sure if it's on there yet, but if you give us two days, I will. Make sure that the presentation is on our website for United Way.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, did you unmute? Are they ready to go? Are they unmuted? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All right, that concludes. Public comments on on agenda.
Items.
Items. Mr. President, so I'll turn it back over to you for more comments.
Board comments. Rose, do you have any comments that you'd like to make this evening?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just comment on, you know, we we took in a lot of information tonight. From three different outside parties, all which was extremely helpful and valuable information for us to get. I really. Am intrigued by the customer service survey results, so thank you guys for putting that together. That's a, that's good information to have. The financial audit information is always riveting to me. And obviously, I, as I said earlier, I appreciated the specificity of the United Way information that was presented tonight, so. And I'd like to thank everybody who. Gutted it out during the policy committee this morning. A couple more to go, and we'll bring it to the full board, so we're we're making some progress there, but that's all I've got, Mr. President.
Mary?
I'd just like to say happy birthday to Rose, since I just discovered it's her birthday. That's it.
Parker.
I'll say happy birthday, Rose. I'm sorry that you had to spend nearly eight hours of it with me. Through three different meetings today.
To wakes.
Thank you. Again, I I just want to say thank you as well, and happy birthday, Rose. Wish you well on this day. It's not over yet, so continue to celebrate. I want to say thank you to Ryan, to Jacob, and Lori, to Todd, for the presentations, especially thank Lori. For compiling the data and presenting it to us on tonight and. Understand a lot of specificity required for that report, and so we really appreciate that. Other than that, thank you, Bill, as well. Appreciate it.
Mr. Haley?
Thank you, Mr. President. First want to say I'm glad you're back in this capacity. I appreciated pinch hitting last time. Very relieved you're back. I'm glad you're doing well. Want to thank those that were here that did present as well this evening, always informative. Just learn a lot from it. We appreciate the thoroughness for those that are still here and those that weren't. And also would like to extend a deep appreciation. You know, a lot of people think this board is highly compensated, but. To put in, especially overtime on your birthday, really, Rose Mulvaney Henry, I hope that. You and John Henry have a little strength to enjoy the balance of your birthday. Happy birthday to you and appreciate. With no significant board pay as we have, that you would continue to to do that on your birthday. Many happy returns of the day to you. And hope at some point in time that we will find the metrics on how the lobby is doing. I'm still curious about that. I do appreciate. Have special interest in the presentation regarding customer service. That didn't take into account. The access for the public or the lobby. Would like to get that hopefully next time, as well as what's happening with our dormant facilities. I I I still want to know how those bids are going. I asked about that last time. As we want to either lease or find some meaningful way for the Gondaro and Call plants. That haven't been said, Mr. President, thank you.
So, Mr. President, I know the David has asked for that. That's happy to come up and address that now, if you, if you will allow her.
Okay, that'd be fine.
This will be brief. For April, the in in-person lobby appointments, so we had forty scheduled. We had two no-shows. Twenty-six were canceled, and what I mean by canceled is we've contacted the customer. Based on the information they provided for their appointment, we would contact them to see if that could be resolved before they had to come in. And twenty-six of those were resolved prior, and then twelve were completed. So we've done twelve in-person appointments for the month of April.
I'm grateful for that. Thank you very much, Abby, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Manager, Mr. President. Good job.
Okay. I'd just like to thank everybody for the presentations that they made this evening. As always, is always informative. I was. Especially interested in the customer service portion, it's something that we, that we as a board probably are most. Involved with and and have most contact with our with our customers. So. I was really happy to see that, and we can be able to have some information that we can pass along to our customers and. And we also can see where areas where we can improve and areas where we're where we're doing well. And Rose, happy birthday. I hope you and Tito.
It's getting a little late in the evening, Mr. President. Getting a little late.
Okay, and that's 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 all I have. So at this time. Angie, would you like to make the? Motion to go into executive session?
Do you want a break first? And if so, okay, how long?
Till eight o'clock?
I move that after taking a break until eight P M., the board go into executive session for ten minutes to discuss confidential matters related to employment of the general manager. A personnel matter of non-elected personnel is justified under the. Exception in the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and that the general manager, William Johnson, and acting chief counsel, Angela Lawson. Be present to participate in the discussion. All others should be dismissed from the room, and electronic and telephonic transmissions to cease. And that we reconvene in open session, returning to both electronic and telephonic broadcasting at eight-ten. To either take action in an open session or to adjourn.
Hey, we have a motion, a that's been in a second. Hey, we have a motion, a, uh, that's been in a second, um, to move into executive session at eight P M. Uh, roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Croneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Are we back on?
Oh.
Yes, we are.
I move that we adjourn.
Wait a second. We have a motion in a second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Croneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.